Robert Maling with the Sioux Empire Podcast and I'm here with Janet Breckie, who is a candidate for Sioux Falls City Council. This is the at-large A seat, if I'm remembering correct.
That's correct.
Excellent. Janet, before we start, do you have an opening statement that you'd like to make?
Well, I'll just, I'll give you a short bio about myself and the reason I'm running. I went to undergraduate and law school down at the University of South Dakota. And from there, after graduation, I've spent my entire professional career in Sioux Falls. I started as a deputy state's attorney at the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's Office and served there for four years. And then I went over to the city and where I became the first full-time city attorney. Prior to me, they were just using contracted out part-time attorneys and they decided they would start an office. So I actually started the city attorney's office. During that period of time, I served under five mayors, starting with Rick Novy, Joe Cooper, Jack White, Gary Hanson, and Dave Munson.
So you predate the charter even there?
I implemented two different forms of government. I served under three. I served under the three commission form of government and then I implemented the three to five commission form of government and then implemented the five commission form of government to the strong mayor policy setting council form of government.
Wow.
So I was there for 18 years. And then when I left City Hall, I did something completely different. I left the practice of law for a period of time and opened Honey Baked Ham Company and Cafe. Everybody's favorite.
Oh, yes.
And ran that for 13 years. And I sold that a year ago, last July, and decided that I had a very interesting background, that mix of, that unique mix of law, government, and business. And felt that I had something more to offer and I started shopping around for what, you know, for some, you know, kind of political thing that might, where I just might be able to offer some balanced knowledge. And I settled up on the city council seat.
Very good. First question from our listeners. What would you do to protect public input? And specifically, they're, you know, worried about things like moving it to a different meeting or moving it to the end of the meeting. Where do you fall on public input at the city council meetings?
You know, I know it's a passionate issue for some people. For me, I mean, I think it needs to be on the agenda. I'm not so concerned where it's placed, whether it's placed at the front or the end. But if people feel passionate about being at the front, then I'm fine with it at the front. I did check back my old notes and in 2002, it was back in the back of the meeting. And we didn't seem to have quite as much negativity at the meetings as there has been when I've been watching them. So I don't know if that had anything to do with that. So I guess I would keep an open mind about it, but I do feel strongly that it needs to be there. That's just something that's been there for as long as I can remember. I don't know why you wouldn't have it. However, I would work to, you know, one of my things that I'm interested in doing is getting the city engaged in long-range strategic planning. And there would be hearings on different parts of those, of that strategic planning process. And it would be really interesting in trying to channel some of those public input ideas into the more appropriate forums where the council is actually working on their issues. So in my long-range goal, I wouldn't see as much of it because I would see more of it in places where the councils actually working on poverty or homelessness. And then getting those people's phone numbers and information and making sure they're called and notified when those relevant testimonies are needed. So I guess that's, you know, just in summary, that's where I'm kind of at on it.
Very good. Let's see. What would you do to increase government transparency?
Well, that's a real trigger issue with me right now. I am extremely concerned. I have, you know, I interviewed all of the council members and all of the directors before I ran. And then I started sitting in on city council meetings in October and started watching them. And I am really shocked at what I've seen. You know, having served at the nucleus of five different administrations, I have never seen what I'm seeing right now. And I'll be specific. I think that the decorum at the meetings is, is, is really awful. That the cross-talk and the commentaries and the editorializing, they're simply not carrying on, conducting a formal meeting like the city has conducted for years. They're not following Robert's Rules of Order. The input gathering process is not recognized in Robert's Rules of Order. They're ignoring open meeting laws and public record laws. And I've, you know, heard complaints from the council about not getting information, you know, and I'm very concerned about that. It's clear that they don't have the information, either in a timely fashion or sufficient information to be making the decisions they're making. So I'm just seeing a lot of problems in the open meeting process itself. And then I'm hearing further things out on the campaign trail, you know, about, you know, things that are of concern about just getting information from City Hall, getting information out of City Hall. And I'm really concerned about that as well because the way I explain it to people, there is so little information in City Hall that isn't public. I mean, literally, there's two offices, the HR office and the city attorney's office, deal with the confidential and/or privileged information. And the HR office, its personnel matters. The city attorney's office, it's pending litigation, current litigation, contract negotiations, collective bargaining. That's it. There is nothing else in City Hall. There is probably some little exceptions I'm forgetting, but there's literally nothing else in City Hall that's not public. All the information that City Hall deals with is basically public.
Yeah, and it blows my mind coming here from other cities, the like, that you could request things and they're just like, no. You know, and yeah.
And so, you know, I, I share the frustration I'm hearing out in the public and I'm angry like the public is as well because this is not how our city runs. It's not how it has run. It shouldn't run that way. My biggest concern is if it's just bad practices or if it's actually been written into policies, ordinances, and procedures. If it has, then it's going to take some unraveling. I have that skill and I promised the public that if I'm elected, I will go in like a bulldog on a juggler and I will seek out, you know, if this stuff is written down and if there's, if these bad practices are written into the policies and procedures. Because if they are, it's going to doom another mayor. I mean, they're literally going to walk right into it and not know. And a lot of this can be really innocuous. I've seen the council pass some, pass some ordinances recently that have made it worse and they don't know what they're doing. They don't know it's making it worse, but I do because I know how it works because I put it together. And so I'm very concerned about the transparency and I, I really want to go in and use those extra skills that I just happen to have, you know, having been city attorney and the city attorney who implemented this form of government, to right the ship.
Very good. What are your goals if you are elected?
The main reason I'm running, you know, is because I'm energized in part by some of the things I did when I was there for the two decades, you know, I was really there. And some of the programs that I actually wrote are working and I have ideas on how to take some of those things to the next level. So for me, there's like three things I just, in this most general sense, that I'm really most concerned about. You know, I want us to be a clean, diverse, safe city. And so the goals and the programs, I have a program in mind for each of those prongs. And they're very specific. On the area of diversity, I think this is a place where the city can show tremendous leadership. The federal government drops the ball, the state drops the ball, but the vast majority of the diversity we're experiencing is the city. And these are our neighbors. These are our new neighbors. And we need to put the kinds of dollars and programming into place that help them come into our community and help them succeed in our community. And I've identified three things. The three things are fluent English. We need to make fluent English available and easily accessible. And we need to have a commitment to it, you know, a funding, programming commitment to it. I think that's just huge. I think if you went to any large city in the country and you said, when your diverse population came in, if you would have done something to commit to fluent English way back then, you know, if you had to do over again, what would you do? They'd probably say, yeah, I would, we would, you know, we can talk. If we can just talk, not conversational English, not workplace English, but fluent English. Think of all the doors that opens for the future. That means that they can come in and hold perhaps these low-paying jobs now, but if they can speak English, you know, they can get further education. They can get a better job later. They can be trained and hired for it because they have a future because they can communicate with us. And I think it'll also, it tends to prevent that desire to live in, in their own communities. Because if they can talk to anybody anywhere they go, they won't have to go live together just so they can communicate. So I think that's huge. And I see it as a public-private partnership, perhaps with, not private, but a public partnership with perhaps the school district. I mean, there's literally hundreds of English classes being taught every day in the city of Sioux Falls. Is there some way? And I think we should at least open the dialogue and try to, try to see if there isn't some way to access some of that. But I see that as number one. Number two is transportation. I mean, we need to have funding and programming to teach people when they come here, you know, how if they're driving, riding bikes, you know, if they're walking, if they're driving cars, you know, how to travel around our community. Because it's literally filling up our court system, plugging up our court system, wasting our police officer's time. We have far better things to do. And making criminals out of innocent people, first thing they get here, you know, they're getting in trouble with the driving rules. So I think that's, that's just a common sense one. And then the third thing is diversity education. And I think you can do the public piece with the kinds of festivals that celebrate diversity and those kinds of things. But there's also a piece that I'm told is really important is the workplace piece, that we need programming and funding to take a show on the road to the various businesses in town and help them understand how to work with a diverse population. You know, and I've talked to several of the stakeholders involved in these issues. I've talked to LSS, I've talked to the Multicultural Center. They would agree that we should be doing more. And I think that it's, I think the cities, it's a, it's a short-term investment with a real long-term potential benefit. Because if we can, again, treat them as neighbors and, and welcome them as neighbors and help them succeed as neighbors, then I think our future just looks much brighter. If we don't, we just let them fend for themselves. And that's what we're doing right now. We're just giving lip service to it. Welcome, welcome, come, we have all these jobs for you. Well, they're endless jobs with, you know, no opportunity. If we just do that, we're just going to create a poverty sector that we're going to have to deal with on the social service side. So I just think it's really important. You can hear my passion about it. But that's, you know, one of my goals is the diversity one. The second one, I said, I wanted a diverse, clean, safe city. The clean piece has to do with our neighborhoods, our maturing neighborhoods in our core areas. To the extent that we can raise the bar for what's, you know, what's acceptable in Sioux Falls as far as our standards for not allowing a neighborhood to deteriorate, I think we raise the bar on a lot of things. Having strong community-like neighborhoods that are clean and kept up is probably your best defense to drugs and gangs. Because they will look for your weakest neighborhood, they will find root, and they will take over. Now, I wrote the two programs that the city's currently using. They're called Projects Nice and Keep. I wrote them back in the 90s. They were designed to prevent slums and to prevent entry of gangs and drugs into the communities. And they're working. But I have in mind a third one. Those programs I wrote were designed to lift neighborhoods, our lowest, our lowest neighborhoods to a minimum standard. And the one that I have in mind now is to lift it higher. And the way we're going to do that is we're going to have government work hand in hand with the private sector. Government can go in and we're going to prioritize our neighborhoods and take it in the one most needed. And I'm told there's about 10. And we'll work our way through them all and we'll give it everything we've got. Government will go in and with less muscle and more compassion and do the things that government can do, like, you know, put the lights in the streetlights, like fix the sidewalks, trim the trees, you know, those kinds of things. Then I see a second half of the program coming in from the private sector using nonprofits, service clubs, businesses, Boy Scout troops. I don't care whoever, we can get a list and match up. That's another thing government can do well. Match up the needs list with the people who are willing to help and then be the orchestrator and organizer for it. I've talked to several large businesses that are really excited about the idea. They said, yeah, they would totally do that. I mean, a lot of those neighborhoods contain their employees. We'll, we'll go out with a paint can and we'll donate the paint and we'll do it. Because I've talked to business and I've said, you guys understand as well as I do that the spreads between the salaries are like they've never been before. The low is way too low and the high is way too high. And these people aren't not fixing up their places because they're lazy. It's because they can't afford to. And if we can help them do that and help, you know, create a sense of community there and open up lines of communication, I think that is one of the best things we can do to deter crime. My third thing was safety. And it ties into this because this is, my clean piece is also a safety piece, as you just heard. My third thing, safety, has to do with how we treat our mentally ill and our addicts. I think that our, and I think it's pretty much acknowledged now across the country that our government systems are just antiquated as it relates to mentally ill and addicts, that we're actually creating criminals out of people who are patients and should be patients. And that by doing this, we're filling up our jails and our pens. Our current pen population, 87% of our penitentiary population is there for mentally ill and our drug-related crimes. So our own Glory House has a higher than national average success rate. They're, they are currently at 62%. Hazelton, the fancy place in Minneapolis, 60%.
Yeah.
Okay, why is that? Why is because the guys are clean when they come out of the pen. They've been dry and their brains have started to heal. So they're dealing with an actual population who has the highest chance of success, of recovery. And they're keeping them on a campus that keeps them from returning to their bad environment. And they, they can walk across the grass, you know, to go to their AA meeting and walk across, across the grass to go to the therapy meetings. And they're expanding their project right now. They're expanding to add 70 more, 74 more apartments over there. That's huge. If that, if that exists, that model exists for treatment, then, you know, we should be looking at our jails and our pens completely different. I've asked the question, you know, why is the Silvering House in the jail? It used to be a river park. You know, why isn't it, you know, at a treatment center or in a wing of a hospital? And so I think the potential is there for something like a rehab jail wing or rehab jail, a rehab piece of the penitentiary that looks and feels more like a Keystone or an Avera Behavioral Health, where they're looking, it looks and feels like someone's going in as a patient. And so if we're going to house them and pay for it anyway, let's give them the proper treatment. And when they come out, because again, this is actually an opportunity. Because if they're in there for one to three years, their brains are pretty well-healed and their chance of success is really huge. And if you've got places like the Glory House to send them when they get out, there's a real chance that we could really reclaim some lives. And what does that do for the city? Well, what does that do to your workforce development issue?
Yeah.
If you can get, Glory House's new goal right now is 75% with their new, their new kind of campus that they're building over there. So if you take 75% of 87% and you return those people to, you know, back into a normal work environment, back into society, that's significant. And I'm also told employers love Glory House's employees because they're really smart, bright, good people. These people that we're losing, you know, to drugs and mental illness are really great people when they're in a recovery state and when they're performing well. They actually are overachievers, a lot of them. And so what is, and so that's what it does to your workforce development. What does it do to your demand for drugs? In theory, what's the best way to fight crime in the drug side? Reduce demand. It does that. Because not only are the users not using, but their children who get caught up in it, you know, and learn from them, they're returned home and it just...
You break a cycle.
Yeah, break a cycle. And so I think that together with the, you know, with what I'm talking about in the neighborhoods, if they can't find a good foothold of a neighborhood to be in, the dealers and the gangs, if we reduce the demand for drugs because we're aggressively channeling their, their potential victims elsewhere, I think that that would have an impact. I really think we would see an impact. And maybe, you know, they'll just go to a city where it's just easier to sell drugs and distribute drugs. So that's, you know, two things that I'm, you know, I'm really excited about doing and working on. And I'm told, because I have been talking to the stakeholders, you know, that now is the time. People are opening up their minds to it. They're opening up the dialogue. I think both hospitals are interested in opening the dialogue. We could actually become a model for the country right here in Sioux Falls with these two large medical industries and the knowledge base that they have about this kind of stuff. So I think it's, there's a real potential that we could actually, you know, do something along this line. And then again, when I go back to the diversity, if we, if we become neighbors with our, with our diverse population, the way our original people did when they came here, the Germans and the Norwegians and the Polish and the English all came over here, if we do that and we do that well, you know, that will, you know, and again, I'm rolling back to that fluent English thing, that opens so many doors and it, and it closes a lot of bad doors, you know, if we can just talk to each other. So I'm really committed to that idea. So those are my three, clean, safe city, really simple. And when people talk about diversity to me and they ask me about, you know, how I feel about it, you know, I just say, you know, in South Dakota, we pride ourselves being friendly, honest, and hardworking. That's how we define ourselves. That's who we say we are. That's who, that's how we want to welcome them and that's all we ask from them. If you'll do that, then I think you're welcome here. If you're not, please go somewhere else. Friendly, honest, hardworking. And I don't care what color, what your sexual orientation is. That's all that matters to me.
Very good. You have, like, very much hit, like, upcoming questions, so I'll ask them, but a lot of them are going to be little bit of like stuff you've already covered, like a checklist. Okay. So the next one, the next question would be, other than expanding the police force, what would you do to proactively respond to rising crime? I think you've given a good statement on that. If you had anything else you wanted to say on that issue specifically?
All I would say is, you know, when I gave my reasons for running, I really did think about it. I really did think, again, based on the knowledge and understanding, again, with my criminal background and having been legal advisor to the police department for 18 years, I really understand, you know, crime and how it works. Having been the code enforcer, enforcer, I understand it. So when I went into the race, that's why everything got very specific for me. I thought, you know, I got some ideas. I think I can really help, you know, some of these situations. So that is true. You know, I kind of answer, I probably answer a lot of questions that, you know, of concerns people are thinking about, but that is the basis for why I'm running. But the other thing that I, I think is really important, again, on that crime front, and I talked to the police chief about it as well. One of the things I said to him was, you know, what community policing programs have you got? Are you searching the country? You should be searching the country all over and find out what, what kind of things bring our cops back into the neighborhoods, like coffee and donuts with a cop. Like, I mean, there's, there's, you know, we need to be searching around the country, cherry picking the best ones, the ones that really are working and work on those. Because again, those things are what work. Just arming up, when I hear people say, we're going to beef up the police department, my response is, well, if that worked, isn't that what every city in the country would just do? We'd just have an army, right? And they'd all take care of us, right? And we wouldn't have any problems. It's far more complicated than that. You've got to, you have to, you know, you have to address it on all fronts and some of those more subtle fronts. The other piece to my, you know, my program, my neighborhood program, has to do with the information flow. If government comes out in a friendly fashion and the private sector comes out in a friendly fashion, those people are going to talk to us. And pretty soon, that lady's going to say, you know, that house that you painted down the street or those steps you fixed, there's a meth addict in that house. So they're going to open up lines of communications and we can tap into that as well. And we can also, again, do the kinds of things that help them build community, help them get out and help us paint their own house and meet each other and meet their neighbors and try to, you know, try to, you know, encourage that kind of thing. I see it being like, I've told people, I describe it like, you've heard of, you know, adopt a highway. What about adopting a neighbor, adopting a neighborhood? Something like that, where there's maybe, you know, maybe a longer-term commitment, you know, with the private sector and the city to these neighborhoods as we work through them.
Very good. Once again, something you touched on with, with your goals answer, but how will you ensure that the Sioux Falls community welcomes people of all walks of life and the listeners specifically listed LGBTQ immigrant, refugee, et cetera?
And I think I pretty well did answer that question, so I'll just reiterate it. I mean, for me, it's about being friendly, honest, and hardworking. I don't care your sexual orientation. And I don't think people really do. They don't want to anyways. I don't think they really want to. If we can just focus differently, you know, shift our focus to that, being, you know, hold those Midwestern values, let us share those with you because it's worked for us and we like it and we'll like each other better if you'll, if you'll just abide by those, you know, work hard, be friendly, be honest, and, and we'll work with you. But I do think, I really do think that the city has given lip service to diversity. They're, they're throwing out this welcome mat and nothing more. And I think that's just wrong. I mean, there was goals, there were goals back in the 90s when we opened the Multicultural Center. There were some goals for that organization to act as a funnel, you know, for people entering the city. Now, I don't, I don't know about Turk issues and I'm not going to, you know, crown one organization over another, but I think there needs to be an umbrella that the city creates that accesses that funnel. So we need, we need some form of organization to make these things happen and not to just pass resolutions. If we pass a resolution and say, welcome to Sioux Falls, you know, for the diverse population and do nothing more, then we've done nothing. But if we pass a resolution, say, welcome to Sioux Falls, and we follow up with action and plans and programming, then we mean it. And I think that's a true, going to be a true test for this next council.
Very good. And we, you talked about this one a little bit too. What would you do to get more living wage jobs in Sioux Falls?
You know, that's a hard one, but I guess for me, it has to do with focusing on fundamentals. Again, going back to, you know, we want to do, we want to treat everything as a specialty item, like we've got to deal with housing, we want to deal with workforce development. But I've seen it, you know, in the city. When we focus on fundamentals, you know, when we, you know, work on our, what cities are really all about, streets, sidewalks, parks, you know, water, sewer, we do those things well. Other opportunities come. If we can be clean, safe, and diverse, people will want to live here. Because that's where people want to live. Now, the workforce development issue, I'm really happy with what the chamber is doing and to the extent that the city can part with, partner with them or enhance what they're doing with their business development park up there. That is a definite project that is designed to bring those high-paying, you know, technical jobs to the city. And that's exactly what we want. But with my diversity issue, you know, when I'm talking about teaching fluent English so that people can have higher opportunities, then they can go to STI or some of those places so that they too, some may, you know, they may come in and have to take that $10 an hour job, but maybe they can have that same American dream that if they, if they can speak, then they can go to school and get trained and they can, you know, eventually take on some of those jobs as well. So kind of want to work hand in glove with what the chamber's doing. Really do want to focus on bringing the high-paying jobs in. I don't think we need to grow just for growth's sake, but if we're going to grow, let's manage our growth. Grow carefully.
Okay. This one you didn't cover in your goals answer here. Bear with me, this one's a little bit of a story here, but just bear with me. You're driving down a dark road on a stormy night. You're groggy, your vision is a little blurry, and as you round the corner, you see a squirrel in the middle of the road playing a tiny magic glass flute. Now, do you swerve and take the ditch to miss the squirrel or do you hit the squirrel?
Oh, I absolutely swerve. I hate that. I have swerved before, yeah. No, I, it's, yeah.
It did, there is no like, well, I guess a few candidates have had a middle ground here, but I'm just, the answers and the logic and the way everyone approaches it differently is just, it's interesting, yeah.
I swerved when he wasn't even playing a glass flute. And I pray for him too. I pray for, you know, I see people, I'm busy praying for him. So I just feel so sad. No, I just don't ever want to be responsible for harming anybody. I don't have to.
Fair enough. So Janet, this is a question that I usually finish this up with for candidates for all the elections we've covered and everything. Why specifically should I vote for you over any other candidate running for your position?
Well, I'll just apply it to the candidate that is, you know, that I am running against John Paulson. You know, I think John's credentials are general. I mean, I know in his position, he must have had leadership, you know, skills and opportunities. But two things, I mean, a hospital's not government, not even close. So my experience is very relevant. It couldn't be more relevant because I did work in this city government for 20 years at the nucleus of, you know, these five administrations. So, I mean, I sat on all the meetings, closed meetings, open meetings, all the committees and advisory boards. I was their, you know, their legal advisor. I was, you know, their legal advisor to all the directors, all the mid-management. So I have this very fundamental knowledge and understanding that would allow me to actually get the things done that I'm talking about doing. And so the difference between John and I is I have very specific goals, very specific ideas, and a track record of having accomplished those kinds of things. So, you know, if I'm allowed to serve again, I really believe I can get those things done.
Very good. And one last thing, Janet, how can people learn more about you?
Um, just go to my website. I've got some videos on there. They're ninety-second videos, says much of what I just said here, but a little shorter. And they can access those or my Facebook page. They can access those as well.
Very good.